Welcome to the August 18th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Rick LaLance has our prayer and our pledge.
If you'll bow with me. God, we thank you so much for all the blessings in our lives. We pray that we never take them for granted. Lord, we thank you for all the members of the city council and all the committees that serve the city. And thankful for the citizens. And, Lord, I want to especially raise a blessing up to the employees of the city tonight and all the appreciation that I've earned for them over the years. And, Lord, just thank you for everything that they do for the citizens. God, I just hope that you'll be with us tonight and give us wisdom in our decisions. And we pray that we'll do things that will honor you. Amen.
That's a nice trick. That was a nice trick.
Got dizzy. Hadn't started yet.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tried to get us.
Yeah. Nice.
That's the only time it's ever been like that.
Yes.
Keeps everybody on their toes.
Hey, before we get into consent agenda, Rick alluded to this in his prayer. Tonight's a special night. For eight years and then for four years, Ronnie Martin and Rick LaLance has served our city. And when I say "serve," it's a sacrifice. Thursday night meetings and the numerous meetings that a lot of people on TV don't see that happen on a weekly basis. So, I want to thank Rick and thank Ronnie for their service. You will be missed, not only from your friendship, but from the family and your decisions that you've made as a council. City TV is not going to miss Rick because Rick is notorious for never talking into his microphone. They were joking that they were going to put four microphones up there in front of you tonight. But, seriously, thank y'all for your service. All right, we'll move into the consent agenda. You have 15 items that are in front of you. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda?
There is none. I'll make a motion to approve if Mr. Wade will second.
Motion.
You're Ronnie.
You're welcome, sir.
And Mr. Wade seconds. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the minutes of the July 13th and the July 21st meeting. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Your honor, I move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Move into old business. You have item 17, ordinance 22019, pension plan amendments. This is second and final reading from administration.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have ordinance 22029, fiscal year 23 budget amendment, ordinance second and final reading, administration.
Move for approval.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to land use matters. You have item 19, ordinance 22020, amending the zoning ordinance, and this is second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into new business. Resolution 22R21, this is a fiscal year 23 budget amendment, number one, from school. Director Duke.
Good morning. Good afternoon, good evening. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight I am presenting a resolution for your approval that recognizes amendment one to the city school's FY23 general purpose budget. These amendments were approved by the school board on August the 9th. This amendment includes an increase in our state BEP funds in the amount of $2,037,000 and a decrease in our previously budgeted Rutherford County property taxes by $1,485,000. The amendment also recognizes a $40,000 grant from United Way to support a new behavior program at Case and Lane. I do want to point out that even with the loss of the $1.4 million in local property tax funding, MCS will meet the local maintenance of effort requirement due to our robust sales tax revenue and the practice of conservatively budgeting local revenues. We are recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Director Duke?
If there are no questions, I move for approval.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Director Duke. All right, you have ordinance, we'll move into ordinances. You have item 21, this is increasing the bid threshold, and this is on first reading, ordinance 22021.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have amendment to the Murfreesboro City Code pertaining to the use of the parking garage.
This is an amendment to the city code, mayor and council, that will clarify what the parking garage ordinance says, and it limits the garage to parking vehicles coming and going for parking vehicles.
Microphone.
I wouldn't go say a thing.
It was in honor of Rick.
I could hear you just fine.
Yeah.
So, the clarification is to make sure that the parking garage is used as it is intended as a parking garage and allow people to come to and from it. And so, it'll address loitering and other gatherings in the parking garage that aren't beneficial for that use.
If there are any comments, I'll make a motion. We approve it.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, well, now moving to land use matters. You have a plan of services, annexation, and zoning for property located along Emery Road. Mr. Blomley.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. And, Mr. LaLance and Mr. Martin, it's been an honor working with you the last four and eight years, respectively.
Thanks, Mr. McFarland.
The item you have here before you is a plan of services and an annexation request for two parcels that are located along Emery Road west of Las Cassas Pike. The total area is about 16.3 acres. They're owned by the Watkins family. Mr. Jeremy Tabor has a contract on these properties and is the applicant for the zoning request for the next item on the agenda. But first, the annexation. The Watkins family have submitted their annexation petitions for both of these parcels so that they can sell these properties, or sell the northern parcel to Mr. Tabor for residential development. You have the plan of services that's been provided in the agenda materials that shows that the city will be able to provide services, provided that certain conditions are met. And those conditions are with regards to emergency access to the existing home. The existing home is right around here. And you'll see that it's on the southern end of the study area, closest to Laurelstone Drive. Laurelstone Drive is where the Laurelstone subdivision is currently under development. And since this photograph was taken, there are actually some homes that have been built out there. The existing driveway for the home comes in off of Emery Road like so. But, that existing driveway will not enable a fire truck to get back to that existing home and provide services. So, prior to the effective date of annexation, we would recommend that an MFRD-approved access drive off of Laurelstone Drive be provided to that existing house. And also, that a temporary access easement be provided, which that proposed emergency access drive will be situated within to guarantee that until an alternative access is provided to the house, that that will remain an emergency access to provide services to that house. But the property, as you can tell, is adjacent to the, or is contiguous with the existing city limits to the north, south, east, and west. No additional right-of-way is included in this study area. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, and it is also within the city's proposed infill service line on the proposed update to the 2035 future land use map. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the annexation subject to three conditions, and I'll read those out loud. Number one, install a 20-foot-wide emergency access drive from Laurelstone Drive to serve the existing house. Number two, dedicate a temporary emergency access easement in the location of the new driveway, which can be extinguished upon the demolition of the existing house or upon the construction of an alternative, suitable emergency access to the house in conjunction with the adjacent residential development. And, number three, execute an agreement between the city, the property owners, and the developer, prior to the annexation becoming effective, that the Laurelstone Drive roadway connection will be recorded as a public right-of-way and constructed as a public street with the first section or phase of the proposed subdivision development. And to give you a little bit of detail on that, is during the neighborhood meeting and the planning commission meeting, the neighbors expressed a strong desire to have an additional access point other than Sandstone Circle, which is right here. The proposed development, as we've discussed with the developer, is not proposed to have access to Emery Road due to the substandard nature of Emery Road at this location, including that 90-degree turn. So, the planning commission conditioned approval on the development of the residential development, providing that public street connection to Laurelstone Drive with the first phase of development. The, that was not the developer's initial intention because the southern portion of the study area, the southern parcel, is not anticipated for development at this time. The current owners wish to remain there in their existing house. However, so as not to funnel all traffic onto Sandstone Circle in the adjacent Pebble Creek subdivision, the planning commission conditioned its approval on that connection to Laurelstone Drive being made with the first phase of the residential development. The applicant and the owners have agreed to this. I've put a copy of the signed development agreement on your tables. It's been signed by both the applicant and the owner. And, so that is, that's ready to move forward. We would hold, if you approve the annexation and the zoning tonight, we would hold the second reading of the zoning until such time as the emergency access drive is constructed and that easement is recorded. But the thing that we wanted to get in place before first reading tonight was the development agreement. And we feel satisfied with the applicant's signing that agreement, which was drafted by our legal department, to move forward with annexation and first reading of the zoning tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And representatives of the development team are here, if you have any questions for them.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? Okay, we have to hold two public hearings. One is for the plan of services and the annexation. The plan of services and the annexation just means that the city can provide services to the property and that we can annex it. We have that public hearing. Then we'll have a public hearing on the zoning. If the zoning fails, the plan of services and the annexation is not valid. So, if you're wishing to speak, you'll come for, you'll come to the podium. You'll have three minutes as an individual, five minutes as a group. If you'll keep all questions directed to the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. If you'll also state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the plan of services and the annexation, please come to the podium. All right, see you and none. We'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading, Resolution 22R, yeah, Resolution 22RPS22 for the plan of services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We now need to consider Resolution 22RA22 for the annexation.
And if the council agrees, we would ask that you make your motion subject to the three conditions that are in the council communication.
For the annexation. Okay?
Move for approval. Substitutes, three.
Subject staff comments.
Subject staff comments. And the three limitations or conditions.
All right, we have a motion. This is just for the annexation. Then we'll get to the zoning. Okay. You got a question, Bill?
My only thought was, we don't have, we're not going to have the public hearing prior to the annexation vote. So, what is the final vote?
No, no, this is just for plan of services and annexation. Then we'll have another public hearing for the actual zoning for the 16.3 acres.
Okay. What did we just vote on then?
That was just the plan of services.
And it passed?
The plan of services passed, and now we'll do the annexation, and then we'll do the zoning.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
I think aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. And that was subject to staff comments. Now, we'll have the discussion on the zoning.
Thank you, mayor. The request for zoning simultaneous with annexation is for both parcels to be zoned RS10 simultaneous with annexation, single-family residential with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. The zoning is generally consistent with the zoning and development in the area. To the north and to the west of the subject property is the Pebble Creek subdivision, which is a PRD, but it has lot sizes of 8,000 square feet and up. So, a 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size is consistent with the Pebble Creek subdivision. The Laurelstone subdivision, which is here to the southeast, is a single-family attached development with two and three units attached to one another on their own lots of record. So, those lots are actually smaller than the proposed RS10 zoning. Directly to the east of the subject property are larger, single-family residential lots in the unincorporated county. As I mentioned, the southern parcel here is not proposed to be developed. It's proposed to be zoned RS10, but the Watkins family wishes to remain in their house on that property. Mr. Tabor's contract is on the northern parcel, which is about 11 acres. The request to RS10 would yield approximately 35 to 40 single-family residential lots. And, as I mentioned, the access would be to Sandstone Circle to the west. And with that development agreement in place, there would be a connection to Laurelstone Drive with the first phase of development. So, that would allow connectivity back to the west and to the north through the Sandstone, excuse me, through the Pebble Creek subdivision, and to the south and to the east, back to Las Cassas Pike, through the Laurelstone subdivision, providing good connectivity in all four directions. The neighborhood meeting and the planning commission meeting, some of the concerns that were raised were with regards to the access, which was addressed with that condition of the annexation, also with regards to the preservation of trees along the northwest and east property lines. You can see the property is, has a good bit of tree cover on it right now. The applicants are present and are available to speak regarding their plan to preserve trees. We've been working with the applicant over the last several days in trying to gain an understanding of how they were planning on preserving the trees. We won't be able to know for certain until we see a final grading and drainage plan, but the applicant is committed to doing what's in his power to preserve those trees, including putting a 20-foot-wide tree preservation easement along the perimeter to preserve those trees along the property line. But Mr. Clyde Roundtree and Mr. Jeremy Tabor are here, and they can address that concern. As I mentioned, additional information will be needed from the applicant to confirm that he will be able to preserve those tree lines. The, both the existing and proposed future land use map of the 2035 plan recommends that the property develop as suburban residential. And recommended zoning classifications for the suburban residential land use character are RS10, 12, and 15. So, the request to zone this property to RS10 is consistent with both the adopted and the proposed future land use map of the city. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The planning commission did vote to recommend approval for this request. And we would hold second and final reading if you approve a first reading tonight until at such time as that driveway is constructed.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Blomley? All right, we need to hold a public hearing for the zoning request for the 16.3 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
I'm Mark Wilson. I live on Oakview Drive, which is east of the property they're looking at. And what I really wanted to address, and he did, which encouraged me to say this, the road that goes on the right that's too narrow for fire trucks is really the old Nashville Las Cassas Road from years ago. It goes down to a ford on the creek. And the trees have been growing there for a long time. So, my concern is, and I appreciate the 20-foot leeway there, but that those trees and that piece of not only history, but it's nice coverage for noise and other things there for those trees not be destroyed. So, that's the only thing I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Brought this up the last time, but.
Can you get your name and address?
Part of it, part of it, I want to ask y'all.
Can you give me your name and address, please?
It's Bobby Houston.
Okay.
2859 Oakview Drive. All right, my concern is with blasting. I'm okay with what they're building and all that stuff. But the blasting on the last one, the one that's on the opposite side, they blew a big rock 900 feet in the air and busted a hole in my driveway. And a lot of that, from people I've talked to that had experience with people that's blasting, the blasters don't want to pay for it when they do something. They just tell you, take them to court. And so, that's my concern. I don't know if any of y'all saw it on the news about the Woodland Hills in Laverne. If you hadn't, you can go on the internet and ask about the blasting damage in Laverne, Tennessee. It's Woodland Hills. They blew rocks all over in the neighborhood, tore a hole through a roof, tore the glass out of the windshield of a car, rocks all over the road. And when they was taking the pictures, they had kids all out there playing in the street, a big old 20-pound rock in the middle of the street, and all them kids out there. And that wasn't so much the blasting, that's from not covering it up. They get in a rush and they don't cover it up. But the fire marshals said they were below state standard. And that's what they tell us when, this is my fourth time go through blasting. But the state standard is still way too high. I put a video camera in my house when a blast was going off, and everything in the house, you could see it on the camera shaking. I'm wondering, this is y'all's part now, is there anything y'all can do to lower that standard? You know, the state's got a standard vibration stuff. They put this little meter box out there. But can y'all do anything far as what y'all building around the city or whatever, if there's a bunch of houses there, that you can lower that, or make that standard where they don't blast as much? And we're just interested in our home. You know, we got money in those, too. And we don't mind, you know, new houses. That's going to be happening whether we like it or not. But we don't want our house tore up. You know, I've got cracks that started from Pebble Creek in my driveway, and now they're splitting apart because of all this blasting. Nobody pays for that. You know, we're just interested in our stuff. But that's my main thing. I didn't know if y'all could do anything far as in the future, or far as blasting. The amount that the state put there is too high.
Okay.
And if you don't believe me, come over to the house when they start blasting and put a video camera there, and you'll see all the stuff on the cabinets falling and shaking, and you'll know what I'm talking about.
All right, thank you, Ms. Houston. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? All right, see you and none. We'll close the public hearing. And we had a question. Mr. Huddleston, I don't know if this would be, can you, I guess, the main thing, maybe make a note on the blasting, or can you give us a little insight on the process on that?
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of council. Yes, state law regulates blasting, and it's obviously been managed through the state fire marshal's office. We do get very involved in blasting complaints, and our local fire marshal or somebody from the fire department can and will go out and inspect their site and work with the blaster to make sure that they have what's required on site. And then we do respond when we do get complaints. And we like to get some of our team out there to see what the nature of the complaints are, and we'll follow up locally. Obviously, the enforcement capabilities there are with the state fire marshal and through the state statute, but we do try to give a little extra personal touch on that local touch when we are aware of problems.
If this does pass, can we make a note for the applicant and for our planning and engineering at the pre-con phase that we could note Mr. Houston's comments and what's happened in the past out there?
We certainly can, and ask the fire marshal to be in attendance at the pre-con and then to get the contact information and do a pre-construction visit with the blaster before that starts.
Thank you. All right, any questions for the applicant or Mr. Blomley?
Thought you had something to say, sorry.
I was just going to offer that, if you needed it, Mr. Roundtree is here, if you have any questions about the tree line.
This is what happens when it's councilmember's last meeting. It only took 29 minutes for it to fall off the rails. All right. Any other questions?
I'm going to move for approval then.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll move to item 24, the Plan of Services Annexation and Zoning for Property Located Along Last Cassis Pike.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Not too far from the other item that we just considered is another annexation and zoning request. A little over 11 acres consisting of three parcels located along the east side of Last Cassis Pike and the north side of East Pitts Lane. There are several existing single-family homes on the property, and the applicants are the owners of the property, or the petitioners are the owners, and they have requested that all three parcels be annexed into the city limits. We provided the Plan of Services in your agenda materials that shows the way in which we'll be able to provide services to the subject property. The property is directly adjacent to the existing city limits as the right-of-way of Last Cassis Pike is in the city limits. We are not including any additional right-of-way in the study area, including the right-of-way of East Pitts Lane because it is rather substandard, does not meet current city street standards. So no right-of-way is included in the study area. The property is within the city's urban growth boundary, however, it is not in the proposed infill service line. Sanitary sewer can be provided from the Laurel Stone Development directly across Laurel Stone Drive. So technically sewer is not available, does not meet the Water Resources Department's definition of available, but it can be extended from Laurel Stone Drive provided that easements are acquired to extend it to the subject property. Staff recommended at the Planning Commission meeting that the Planning Commission deny the annexation and zoning because of the following reasons. The requested zone change to CF, which we'll go over the zoning in a few minutes, is in conflict with both the existing suburban estate general land use plan designation and the proposed future study area designation. It's staff's position that infill occurring within the proposed infill service line should occur first before considering annexing beyond the line to maximize the use of existing road and utility infrastructure. I mentioned that this is not within the infill service line of the proposed future land use map, and just to reiterate, that is a proposed future land use map. It has not been adopted yet, but it's pending before our Planning Commission right now. Last Cassis Pike is currently experiencing high peak hour traffic volumes and should not be exacerbated by additional traffic at this location in staff's opinion as improvements are not planned in the near term for Last Cassis Pike. Any annexation beyond the proposed infill service line may unduly trigger additional annexation requests on the easterly side of Last Cassis Pike, which would have the above issues as well. So with that being said, staff recommended to the Planning Commission that the annexation and Plan of Services not be approved. However, the Planning Commission did recommend the approval of the annexation and Plan of Services after holding a public hearing at its June 1 regular meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing on this annexation and Plan of Services, and I'll give a separate presentation on the zoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. All right, any questions? All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing for the Plan of Services and the annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider on first reading Resolution 22RPS 23 for the Plan of Services.
Move for approval, second.
Motion of second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to the Annexation Resolution 22RA 23, and this is for the annexation.
Move for approval, second.
Motion of second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now need to consider the zoning request for 11.4 acres. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This is the same property that you just considered for annexation. The request is to zone the property to CF simultaneous with annexation. That's the Commercial Fringe District. The applicant is the Murfreesboro Medical Clinic, and it is their intention to build a new satellite medical office on this property. Mr. Matt Taylor will go over a brief presentation in a few minutes. I would reiterate that the images that he'll show you regarding the concept plan and the elevations, the building elevations are just that, they're just conceptual. Since this is not a planned development, those images are not set in stone, and it's nothing that we could hold the applicant to. So just wanted to throw that caveat in there that it's their good faith effort to show what they do intend to build on the property. But since it's not a planned development, it's not compulsory for them to comply with. The request to zone to Commercial Fringe is not consistent with both the adopted future land use map and the proposed future land use map. The adopted future land use map recommended, recommends that the property develop with the suburban estate land use character. That is our least dense residential land use character that's roughly one acre per lot and above. So the request is not consistent with the adopted future land use map. And as I mentioned in the previous public hearing, it is outside the city's service infill line on the proposed future land use map update. And I won't repeat the recommendations that I read out for the annexation and zoning. I would just be repeating those items, but staff did recommend the denial of the zoning at the June 1 Planning Commission meeting, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the zoning request at that meeting. Be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Matt Taylor, I believe, would like to give a presentation now.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Mayor, members of the council, Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Joey P. of MMC, as well as the Taylors, the current landowners, and Mr. Harney of the Parks Group. And did want to give a brief presentation over MMC's plan for the land. We understand, as Mr. Blomley said, it's not a planned development, but we think the city's ordinance and design guidelines will force us to comply with pretty much what we're showing here. So as Mr. Blomley said, it's about 11 acres located at the northeast corner of East Pitts and Last Cassis Highway, shown here in the pink and white. You see the city limits directly across the street in Laurel Stone. Got sewer directly up to the street. Mr. Taylor has already secured those easements or agreements for those easements to extend that sewer for this project. And then the site currently flows from east and north down toward the west and crosses underneath Last Cassis Highway between the Taylor's property and the existing church. Few pictures of the site itself. One of their homes. All of the structures will be demolished with the first phase of construction. It's the existing church. And this is looking back toward the north. This is looking back toward the south toward town. So you'll notice if you've driven around to any of MMC's most recent projects, they are very well branded. They're trying to develop a brand identity through their architecture as well as their service, and so we intend to continue that with this property. It is just over 11 acres in size. There is more property here than MMC needs for a single building, so we will have some out parcels. Those uses are going to be complementary, cohesive with MMC's health use. They don't, there's been some concern in the past about beer and tobacco, liquor stores, things like that. Those are not conducive to what MMC wants to portray themselves at, and so they will have more desire, and we'll hold those accountable to who they sell to right there. Architecture itself, this again mimics their headquarters on Garrison as well as their most recently completed construction along South Church Street or Shelbyville Pike, and be very closely mimicking what is under construction on Shores and Veterans currently. So be a very well-defined entrance with a canopy, multiple building planes, will have a 45-foot maximum building height, and of course will meet all the city's design guidelines. Access, we do intend to have a central access point on the Last Cassis Pike. We fully intend, believe, we'll have to extend turn lanes, just like Laurel Stone did. This will be a shared access onto Last Cassis Highway for our out parcels to access as The exact access point for those out parcels will be determined at a site plan, but we do anticipate those to be toward the back of the properties themselves. And then the city zoning ordinance will require substantial landscape buffers all around our perimeter, shown here in green. So I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. We'll now open the public hearing for this annexation, or excuse me, this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the council. I'm Joey P. I reside at 1501 Cripple Creek Road. I'm currently the CEO of Murfreesboro Medical Clinic, and I would ask for your approval of this zoning. This is consistent with the zoning that we have at our South Church property, and that's why we decided to go with that. As far as the design standards for our building, I don't think you have to hold us to those. That is a plan that we've developed a few years ago, and the buildings that we've built have shown what we're trying to accomplish, the types of buildings we're trying to construct. As Mr. Taylor was just saying, the image that we're trying to create, people look at our building and understand that that's a Murfreesboro Medical Clinic building. The smaller one on the Shelbyville Pike area would be something similar to what we would be doing here. Right now, the plan is to be a little larger than that. That one is 30,000 square feet. This one would be probably 40,000 square feet. Our intent with doing this is to expand physician services in this community. Right now, especially with adult primary care, it's very underserved. We hired four new physicians to start between April of this year and January, and we thought we're finally getting ahead of the curve, getting adult PCPs into this community. We ended up losing five. So we're actually down one on our just adult PCP business. We're recruiting heavily, and we need the space to expand. Getting another location on the east side of town or northeast corridor gives us that opportunity to keep those services on that side of town, requiring or not requiring people to go to Garrison Drive, to Shelbyville Pike, or to our new Shores Road location that will be opening next year. Again, we're trying to provide those services where people live and reside. We talked to a potential tenant that would be joining us in our building, which is currently, they have a office, a facility in our large building on Garrison Drive. It's a physical therapy company, and I mentioned this potential development, and he was very excited. He said there's no commercial space for a business like his to locate on that side of the community. So giving those opportunities. And when Mr. Taylor talked about the various out parcels and things, again, we're in the health business. We want to have places around us that promote good health. No liquor stores, no vape shops, smoke shops, things that promote services again to where people don't have to go clear across county downtown to those areas. They can get those services closer to where they live and not have to create more traffic burdens on the roads that are already overburdened. I'd be glad to respond to any questions that you may have regarding our overall development or just the plan for our clinic location.
Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. P. We'll have to do that at the end of the public hearing. Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 22OZ 23.
Matt, you did a great job on that presentation, and this is definitely something I feel is very much needed as we grow. Of course, the needs of our citizens grow, and a lot of our citizens are getting older, and we need more facilities like this. If there are no questions or comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Abstain.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to Planning Commission recommendations for public hearings.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we have three to schedule tonight, and we would recommend a public hearing date for all three of September 22. We already have public hearings scheduled for that evening, and so figured we would just add those to that meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion of second. Are we dealing with 25 on our... Oh, no, I'm sorry. Item 25 had been removed from the agenda. I apologize. I had a line through it and went right over it. Okay, just checking. Thanks, guys. All right, we have a motion of second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Can we schedule some more?
Yeah. I think there's not enough for that night, actually.
I'm thinking pretty much every Thursday.
You'll be home anyway, Rick. Don't worry about it.
You can watch us. All right, we'll move to item 27, Payment in lieu of Taxes. This is a pilot program for a project for McNeilus Truck and Manufacturing Economic Development Project. Mr. Tyndall.
This is an economic development project that the state and chambers brought to the city. It's a payment in lieu of taxes or a pilot program that the company has requested. The company is McNeilus, and if you're in the solid waste business or the concrete business, you'd recognize that name. They make the big trucks that operate in that business. Mr. Latour, Mr. Kamik is here. I don't know which one, but they could come up and talk a little bit about the company and answer any questions that they might have regarding the project itself.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and council members. Thanks for having us here. We're very excited about this project, and thank you, Craig. This is a project that we've been working on for a while, since April. We've partnered with the City of Murfreesboro staff, the State of Tennessee, Tennessee Valley Authority, and other organizations. So it's just like a lot of projects, it was a team effort. A few months ago, the project team came to visit Murfreesboro. We were able to pitch them our community, our strong workforce, and our quality life. And we learned at that time about the company's passion to make the highest and best-in-class products and their commitment to communities they operate in. So it seemed like it'd be a great partner with the City of Murfreesboro. We believe our workforce programs, our strategic location, and our business-friendly community really helped us become the preferred city for this project. So we're excited again to partner with this fantastic global brand, McNeilus. I have some project highlights also. And this is an example, as Craig mentioned, I'm not sure if this is coming up on the...
It is.
Great. Example of their cement mixer, their concrete mixer vehicles. As Craig said, you know, they're top of the line, well-known with customer service, highest -end products, and making a big impact in the communities they operate in. So we worked this project confidentially as Project Hurricane, but the company is McNeilus. It's a part of the Oshkosh commercial segment. And so they've committed to 125 jobs, and the total project, we're looking at a new investment to the city of $136 million. They're looking at locating on 2120 Logistics Way, which is a new address. You'll notice the big building, about 845,000 square feet going behind Amazon off Joby Jackson. So they would lease from the building owner, Granite, and the operations would begin next year. So again, very excited. Continue to thank you for your support and partnership with the City of Murfreesboro, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I move for approval.
Second. Motion of second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
It's a payment in lieu of taxes or a pilot program that the company has requested. The company is McNeelis, and if you're in the solid waste business or the concrete business, you'd recognize that name. They make the big trucks that operate in that business. Mr. Latour, Mr. Kamik is here. I don't know which one, but they could come up and talk a little bit about the company and answer any questions that they might have regarding the project itself.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and council members. Thanks for having us here. We're very excited about this project, and thank you, Craig. This is a project that we've been working on for a while, since April. We've partnered with the City of Murfreesboro staff, the State of Tennessee, Tennessee Valley Authority, and other organizations. So it's just like a lot of projects, it was a team effort. A few months ago, the project team came to visit Murfreesboro. We were able to pitch them our community, our strong workforce, and our quality life. And we learned at that time about the company's passion to make the highest and best-in-class products and their commitment to communities they operate in. So it seemed like it'd be a great partner with the City of Murfreesboro. We believe our workforce programs, our strategic location, and our business-friendly community really helped us become the preferred city for this project. So we're excited, again, to partner with this fantastic global brand, McNeelis. I have some project highlights also. And this is an example, as Craig mentioned, I'm not sure if this is coming up on the...
It is.
Great. Example of their cement mixer, their concrete mixer vehicles. As Craig said, you know, they're top-of-the-line, well-known with customer service, highest-end products, and making a big impact in the communities they operate in. So we worked this project confidentially as Project Hurricane, but the company is McNeelis. It's a part of the Oshkosh Commercial Segment. And so they've committed to one hundred twenty-five jobs, and the total project, we're looking at a new investment to the city of one hundred thirty-six million dollars. They're looking at locating on twenty-one twenty Logistics Way, which is a new address. You'll notice the big building, about eight hundred forty-five thousand square feet going behind Amazon off Joby Jackson. So they would lease from the building owner, Granite, and the operations would begin next year. So again, very excited. Continue to thank you for your support and partnership with the City of Murfreesboro, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Tucker?
I'm just going to make a comment, if there's any questions, just to... I see this a lot, and I don't, you know, I'm not going to be here by the time the consulting stuff gets back and all that kind of stuff. But for you guys that are going to be on the council when this comes through, I would just mention to you to be aware of, I think would be the right word, about, you know, what implications there are to offering lump sum distributions to employees. It's, many of the ones that I see, they vary a bit, but many of the ones that I see from different companies that are doing this, you know, the ultimate goal here is that, you know, the company's kind of trying to get rid of the pension liability, which is not evil in and of itself, but there's a discount typically associated with that lump sum that they're offering them. And essentially, it's, there's a ton of math that goes along with trying to figure out, you know, is this really the right thing for somebody to choose to do? I mean, I had one of these from an old bank that I used to work at, where they were just like, look, why don't you just take a check instead of keeping your pension? And I mean, it's based on assumptions. You've got to try to figure, you know, how long are you going to live? Who knows? I mean, there's things you don't know, but just, you know, once somebody takes that lump sum, there is no pension. And, you know, as we sit up here and think about the idea of, we have all gotten many, many, many calls, I know, about people who want an increase to their pension, right? I mean, you know, that's not what they signed up for. I'm not saying it's bad to ask for it. I'm just kind of saying they knew what they were signing up for in their pension, yet they still ask year over year over year over year to get a raise on that pension. Once you take this, that is all out the window. So just, you know, you want to make sure if it's, you know, when we do this, I would hope, and I know that you guys that are in, you know, the staff that's going to be dealing with this is going to make sure that, you know, they're doing this without having a discount that's going to be too detrimental to the employees of MED, you know, that this will impact. So just kind of keep your eyes on that. I would say that discount is the big number to see what they're using there, and just keep that in mind is all, I guess I would say about that. Okay?
So we are voting tonight, yea or nay, to go forward in letting you all look at the options.
To hire the two firms. So Cowden and Associates, they're the actuary that helped us with the MED plan when we first sold the electric department, so they have a strong familiarity with the plan. They would calculate those lump sums as of a specific date and communicate those with the participants that are not yet drawing benefits, so that is a distinction. It would not be for participants that are actively retired. It would only be for those who have not yet retired. And then they are willing and able to meet one-on-one with the participants to discuss their options, to discuss how it was calculated. And, you know, some of the options are to roll it over into an IRA, roll it into a 401K, you know, if they have an available plan to roll those into, where they can then manage those investments and earnings from that point forward. Again, we're not pushing anyone, just saying you have that option, and then for those that don't, we would then look to purchase annuities for everybody remaining in the plan after that point. So we definitely understand your point. We've talked with the consultants and with an outside attorney as well about this that has experience, and part of our discussion has been certainly around that discount rate and comparing that to the IRS discount rate that's required on private pension plans. Our pension plan and the MED pension plan are not ERISA-covered plans, meaning as a government plan, we don't have as many requirements to follow, but we intend to follow as closely as possible to those just for the sake of comfort that we've taken care of the participants properly.
All right, any questions?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item thirty, the Child Advocacy Center funding.
We are asking council to approve ninety thousand dollars in funding to cover one-time moving expenses related to the relocating of the Child Advocacy Center to a new facility. The Child Advocacy Center currently has maintained an in-kind lease with the city for the use of the old fire station number five on Samsonite Boulevard. We are unable to continue to renew that lease due to the deteriorating conditions of the facility, requiring the CAC to relocate. The CAC has found a privately operated commercial space and will be negotiating a lease agreement with them with plans to occupy this space the beginning of the first of the year. The requested funds will be administered within the police department's budget. I can try to answer any questions, and Sharon DeBoer with the Child Advocacy Center is here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn. I'll just make the comment, we've had numerous discussions about this, even as latest two weeks ago, all the municipal mayors and the county mayor all met to be briefed about, you know, the CAC does a great job, and the plain fact, if the CAC was not there, the organizations inside our municipalities would have to find a way to be able to do that job. And really, this budget, what we discussed, needs to be more of a law enforcement budget as opposed in strategic partnerships, but really, we met to talk about how that we all can partner together moving forward to be able, as communities, not just the City of Murfreesboro, to be able to support, and everyone was super supportive of that, but unfortunately, it was already past budget time. So our staff has been really good to talk about helping CAC to move forward with the lease and then work to partner together for next year. So that's why that's here. Any questions?
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you all for what you do. All right, we'll move to strategic partnerships. Ms. Glenn.
So we are requesting council to approve the strategic partnership funding schedule as presented in your agenda package. These agencies represent what has been previously funded. This request also represents the final allocation of strategic partnership funding from the general fund for the operating partner categories for community development, police, parks and recreation, and schools. Moving forward, these strategic operating partners will submit funding requests to the foundation established through the MED cell for future funding considerations. The governmental services, economic development, and transportation strategic partners will remain in the general fund.
Any questions for Ms. Glenn?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have the contract for, thank you, Ms. Glenn, we have the contract for sidewalk repair services for ADA compliance. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Item I have denied is the contract for sidewalk repair for ADA compliance. This will be our second year using this contract. The work includes grinding off trip hazards along sections throughout the, or to regain ADA compliance. We typically do this as part of our paving program before we resurface the streets. The maximum contract amount is not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand, is effective from one year from the notice-to-proceed date. We get the funding from this, this work from our state street aid, which is our local share of the state's gasoline tax. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have fiscal year twenty-two CIP funds reallocated for broad and church intersection improvements. Mr. Griffith.
Yes, sir. Staff has identified improvements to the Church Street, Broad Street intersection. These improvements would enhance traffic flow and pedestrian movements in and out of the central business district. Planned improvements include an additional southbound right turn lane along Church Street as well as additional northbound right turn lane along Broad Street. We'll also widen the sidewalks in this area, the existing sidewalks in this area, and modify the streetscape along both sides of the Church Street corridor. We have currently estimated these costs of the improvements to be one point three million dollars, and we recommend funding this by reallocation from the FY twenty-two bond and loan proceeds from deferred projects. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to professional services contract for the Medical Center Parkway widening.
Yes, this is a design contract with Energy Land and Infrastructure. Staff requested a proposal from ELI for the preliminary and final design to widen approximately three point four one miles of Medical Center Parkway from the I-24 interchange to Northwest Broad Street. This project would include additional through lane in both directions from I-24 to Broad Street, would also incorporate improvements to the intersection of Medical Center Parkway and Broad Street as well, which would include additional turn lanes and through lanes in multiple directions. In an effort to accelerate the timeline and minimize the impact in this corridor, the construction contracts with this project will be bid in multiple phases. We've included a map for your review to kind of get the area in question. ELI's proposal for this is one million nine hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and we propose to fund this from reallocated FY nineteen, twenty-one, and twenty-two CIP bond and loan proceeds, which were previously approved by the council. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to professional services contract for the Asbury Lane realignment.
He hasn't had his medicine. He's got that.
Four more years. Four more years.
Going to miss him. The engineering department requested a proposal from Wiser Company for the preliminary and final design of the realignment of Asbury Lane. This realignment will eliminate the existing intersection of Asbury Lane at Medical Center Parkway and reroute it to make a connection with Wilkinson Pike to the east, as outlined in the twenty forty major thoroughfare plan. This design also incorporates a roundabout that connects Wilkinson Pike, Asbury Lane, and Conference Center Drive. Also included with this proposal are signal modifications at Medical Center and Conference Center Drive to accommodate the new connection. We've included a map showing these conceptual improvements, which is attached for your review. Wiser Company's proposal was for four hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and five dollars, and this expense is actually included as part of the Wilkinson Pike project, which was in the FY twenty-two CIP budget. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Oh, one other thing on this, we weren't able to get this to the city attorney in time, so we would ask that this would be, this contract would be subject to approve, to review and approval by the city attorney.
The only thing, I'll make a comment about this, is whether or not we should consider in both of this and the next item, whether or not we should consider at least having them look at the north road that's going to come out of, you know, the east, basically the east boundary of the property line. I mean, it seems like that's a matter of time, kind of a deal, where we're going to have to have that road cut all the way up to either, yeah, to, you know, the Asbury...
Asbury Road.
Road, you know, up there to the north. I mean, while we're doing this, at least at the study part, at least at the study stage and perhaps at the right-of-way purchase stage, but I would say at least at the study stage, at least have them go ahead and do the study if we need to, if that makes sense. I see there's a little stub out, but I mean, that's coming, it seems like, so I just would suggest that. Long-term on that north-south connector, in our major thoroughfare plan, don't we show that north-south connector going over eight forty and connecting back to Broad Street?
It actually, it actually connects, Asbury Lane actually connects back to Manson Pike. I'm not sure.
Okay. I'd have to... I think we had one that was showing it going over eight forty, somewhere along, right around Overall Creek or somewhere in there, if I remember that, just off memory, but anyway, if it, if, I guess what I'm just saying is, we don't necessarily have to vote on it tonight, but at least you may want to consider doing that as an amendment or something like that in the weeks to come here to make sure we've studied that northbound out on the east side of the property.
Yes, sir. We certainly have had discussions with the property owner about that connection and think It actually, it actually connects, Asbury Lane actually connects back to Manson Pike. I'm not sure.
Okay. I'd have to. I think we had one that was showing it going over 840, somewhere along, right around Overall Creek, or somewhere in there, if I remember that, just off memory. But anyway, if it, if, I guess what I'm just saying is, we don't necessarily have to vote on it tonight, but at least you may want to consider doing that as an amendment or something like that in the weeks to come here, to make sure we've studied that northbound out on the east side of the property.
Yes, sir. We certainly have had discussions with the property owner about that connection, and think that we have a workable alignment with them, but we can include that with at least a conceptual layout, what that looks like all the way to the north. Absolutely.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Alright, we'll move to acquisition of right-of-way eneasements for the Asbury Lane realignment.
Yes, this is just the ability to begin the appraisals and to actually begin negotiations and for the needed right-of-way eneasements from the properties that are affected by this project. If agreements are not reached, staff recommends proceeding with condemnation, depositing the appraised value in the court. The cost of these appraisal services are incorporated within the project's budget, and again, that was included in the FY '22 CIP budget for Wilkinson Pike. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith?
Chris, based on my last comments, is it, are we prepared to be able to say, should we go forward with the potential right-of-way acquisition or the appraisal of that eastern sliver?
We've not included that in the budget, as far as the, you know, it's a pretty long stretch up to Asbury Road, so I'd want to look, I think we have about a million dollars included in the right-of-way budget, so I'd want to look at, you know, what those costs came out after the appraisals, but it's certainly something we could, we could, anytime you can get the entire right-of-way that you think you're going to need from a property, especially a property that's in redevelopment, I think you're smart to at least look at it.
I'll make a motion for this particular, what we've got here, and then I'll just leave it up to you guys to figure out how it would be best to perceive, but, you know, goes without saying, probably without me saying this, but I'll say, you know, I mean, I'd be for, let's try to knock it out, I mean, while we're dealing with this, and do it all at once. If we, if there's a way we can do that tonight, good for me. If not, fine too, y'all, it'll be up to y'all. But I'll make a motion on this particular item to approve it.
Is it, we have a motion, but before we have a second, is it possible to do that in?
I don't think we can do it based on, in this particular contract, the cost for the appraisals is based on the size of the lot, so I would say come back with another contract.
Alright. Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Alright, we'll move to, thank you, Mr. Griffith. We'll move to the purchase of fleet maintenance software. Let's try it.
Evening, Mayor, council members. I'll take this opportunity to introduce you all to Kyle Lingo. He's a longtime fleet employee that was recently promoted to assistant director, so I drug him out here tonight to.
Congratulations.
But this contract is for the purchase of new fleet maintenance software from Faster Asset Solutions. We'll be switching from a server-based operation to a web-based. With all of the growth in the public works department and expanding city, this software will allow us to keep up. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you. Jackie, you and your team do a great job keeping the city running, literally. So thank you all for what you do.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we have amendment to Galls' contract for the purchase of body armor. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Excuse me. For your consideration this evening is a request to approve the purchase of 100 sets of body armor from Galls. The new body armor will replace older sets, which are reaching their expiration date of five years. The total cost of the purchase is 117,975 dollars, which will be funded by the American Rescue Act Plan, and at this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
There are no questions. I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Alright, we now have item 39, the purchase of new police vehicles.
Yes, sir, Mayor. For your consideration, is a request to purchase 11 Ford Explorers from Ford of Murfreesboro through state contract. These are unmarked vehicles that would be assigned to officers in our criminal investigations division. The total cost for 11 vehicles is approximately 423,000 dollars, and they will be funded through the American Rescue Plan Act. At this time, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Alright, you have engineering task order for WRF wet weather upgrades.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. Rick and Ronnie, it's been a pleasure, been an honor to have you guys up here for the last several years. Going to be different without you, but you guys have both been very deliberate and thoughtful on how you've approached all your decisions for the city, and proud to have worked alongside you for all these years. So, the WRF, the Water Resource Recovery Facility, not to go into too much detail, but we had a study done and looked at five different options. The plant basically works under dry weather different than it works under wet weather. So what we're asking tonight is, it's an engineering task order to do some upgrades to the plant to help it handle more of that wet weather rain event related flows. So we looked at five different options, did a hydraulic study on the plant. We're looking at getting the plant up to 80, so we have a rated capacity of 24 million gallons a day. That's when kind of the concentrations of the pollution or the sewage is at normal levels. When we get up to 80, it's very dilute and it's mostly rainwater. So to do this, to do these improvements, though, we're talking about 8.1 million. This has been on our CIP for several years. It's a little bit escalated now since costs have gone up recently. The total, though, when you bring in engineering and construction testing and permitting, gets us up to around 9.1 million. So, taking it back to our sewer allocation report, you can see these highlighted numbers, that's the 47.4 million that we've talked about in getting the capacity of the sewer collection system up to snuff. That brings more flow to the plant. We had the five and a half million there at the plant, that's gone to 9.1. So it's been part of the plan. The numbers have just gone up a little bit based on current conditions, about 3.3 million more than we had estimated. So we've got a revised total now about 50 points, almost 51 million for the total system improvements. The task order is kind of broken out into the study report, preliminary, final design, construction, and project management. It's 693,000. That's roughly eight and a half percent of the construction. So with that, we would recommend approval to go into those, to go into that design contract with Smith segment and rate. And so I'm available for questions if you have any.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Alright, we've to item 41, equipment storage addition.
Mayor, thanks again. Yes, this is just, we had half of this building built several years ago. We're just trying to complete the other half of the construction. It's basically a pre-manufactured metal building. It's time for us, we need that additional storage for equipment. You can kind of see the elevation and the plan of where it's located on the O&M campus. We just had two bidders, really tight bids, just, gosh, less than a few hundred dollars separating the two bids. Only problem, our estimate was 225,000, but our low bid with Rice Construction Company came in at 343,517. But we do need the space, and we do understand that the bids are coming in higher than expected. But we would recommend approval to award this construction contract to Rice Construction Company, LLC.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cool. Alright, we have the road development agreement, Chandler Place, MTI-19, Farmhouse Downs. This is administration. Ms. Huddleston.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of council. I too would like to echo Darren's statement sentiments to Councilman Martin and Councilman LaLance. You have challenged me to be more thoughtful and a better city employee, and I appreciate that, appreciate the thoughtfulness and effort that you two have put into the positions you've done, and we'll miss you, appreciate your work on the council, but we'll miss you being here at our regular Thursday night appointment. I'm sure you won't miss that, though, in your next couple of weeks. I did ask Councilman Smotherman the other day, I said, how long did it take? And he said, two weeks. And I thought, how much free time I have now? So enjoy that part of it as well, and I think you'll appreciate it. I do have a project development agreement with you for you tonight and ask your approval. It's a public-private partnership to assist in the construction of a, an improvement that's on our major transportation plan known as MTI-19. Farmhouse Downs development is under construction east of Rutherford Boulevard, coming out on John Bragg Highway. Their proposal includes about a 5,000-foot extension of that roadway. It will be named Lyons Farm Parkway once it's complete, and it extends from John Bragg Highway through the southern extent of their development. And as tradition and practice has it, we often participate in major transportation, projects on a major transportation plan through a public-private partnership. In this agreement, we are actually working on a side street as an in-kind contribution rather than participating on the main route and signalization to allow the developer to complete that work without coordinating with city forces. And so I asked tonight that you would approve the agreement that would connect Chandler Place to Lyons Farm Parkway. As the city's participation in this major transportation improvement, we have proposed using city forces, and our portion of that would be to grade and install the base stone for the roadway. The developer would then pave that roadway, and we would have a connection and be ready to open to traffic that would connect Chandler Place, which comes out on Rutherford Boulevard, to Lyons Farm Parkway. The estimated cost for this is 150,000 dollars to be taken from state street aid, and the street department's activities on this, including their labor equipment and materials, would be absorbed in their operating budget. I'd ask your approval of the agreement, and I'm ready for, to be able to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Huddleston?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Alright, we have a sub-recipient agreement with the Murfreesboro City Schools.
Thank you. We are requesting approval of this sub-recipient agreement between the city and city schools for $500,000 of ARPA funds to be used towards a tutoring program within city schools. The use of funds, as well as the sub-recipient agreement, are in line with U.S. Treasury guidelines, and these funds were part of the spending plan that was previously approved by council. Can answer any questions, and Dr. Duke is here as well, if you have any.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Alright, you have one beer permit. Ms. Brown, is everything in order?
Yep, this is for a special event for Tennessee Equality Project on 9/17. The applicants met all requirements for the permit.
Okay.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Do we have any board and commission appointments? Alright, council members, if you will, every two years we do this, we're going to have some changes in our board and commission appointments. If you don't mind emailing Craig or me and letting me know if you want to stay on the board and commission that you're on, or what you'd like to do, or if you have any recommendations, and we'll try to, through those, any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
And with that, if you want to stay on the board and commission you're on, that would greatly help. I think we're just getting good at this. Alright, any other business for staff?
Mayor, council, next meet on September the first, and preceding that meeting will be the swearing-in for the re-elected and newly-elected council members. Along those lines, I would, it's been said several times, I do want to echo also my thanks to Mr. Martin and Mr. LaLance for their leadership in the city. It does take an enormous amount of time to do this job. You guys have done it well, greatly appreciated, and it's been a pleasure most of the time to work, to work with you.
Appreciate, bro.
Troublemakers, troublemakers.
Thank you.
You know, I didn't say this, we had a meet, we had a get-together before out in the rotunda, but both of y'all, you look back over the last four years, and there has been a lot of tough decisions that have been made over the last four years, from budgeting to a pandemic, to lots of different things that we all have had to do. So I want to congratulate you on your work on the council. So you both will be sorely missed.
And I'd like to say that, this is a bittersweet night. Bittersweet. I'm going to miss you all. I've stopped crying. Ronnie knows I've been crying. I mean, I'm serious, you know. It was a left side, right side. And I'm going to miss you. You may not think so.
I do.
Now, you, Rick, you kept the council laughing, and, I mean, you know, because there were some stressful times up here, and just some of the jokes you just said and everything, and I'm going to miss that. And Ronnie?
What do y'all want to close the meeting? Ronnie?
Sir.
Go ahead, Ronnie.
Mayor, let me just make one comment. I haven't said a whole lot, but both these guys have had an opportunity to get to know. Public service does one thing, it shows your heart. Not, sometimes it shows our thoughtfulness as well, but you, both you guys, there's nothing. Well, we have not agreed on every issue and every point. There's one thing that none of us on this council and no citizen in this community can doubt. You truly love this community, and you've offered yourself to service. All of your skills, your experience you brought to that, and the energy that you brought to service, to public service, is truly an example for all of us to follow, and I thank you for what you've given to this community.
And don't forget, they both are going to be appointed, one to the Community Investment Trust and one to the Citizens Trust, so they're not going anywhere. You want to close this out?
I've enjoyed it, you guys. It's been an honor.
I've enjoyed it, you guys. It's been an honor.